So we have a, maybe not the longest agenda, but I think it's going to be a full agenda and a full discussion today. And so because we are in the state of emergency here in New Hampshire, we are operating this meeting virtually. So there's no physical location for this meeting. We have sent out instructions for participants to be able to join us on Zoom. And also those who do not have computer access or choose not to use computer access can call into this meeting and participate in the conversation and participate in the conversation over phone. This is allowed because of an emergency order from the governor, which allows us to hold virtual meetings at this time. So we are, as a board, we are going to adhere to all the other provisions of RSA 91A, which is the state right to no law and public meeting. So we will be recording this, this meeting and the recording will be available to the public. We'll be taking minutes of the meeting and those will be available to the public as well as we move forward. And we will be doing public comments two times as part of this meeting. Once at the, the front end of our meeting and then before we conclude, there's another section for public comment. So public will have the ability to engage the board. And I'll give some instructions as we get closer to public comments for how those who are participating as part of this call can get our attention and I can unmute their line so they can provide comments. And so I did say we have a cast of smiling faces. I'll just introduce for those who are participating, who else is with us? So I introduced the board and Steve Chamberlain. We also have James Newsom, who is the district moderator. Janet Krzygniewak, who is the budget committee chair, and Rich Houston from the budget committee has also joined us. Gene Lightfoot, who is one of our supervisors of the checklist, is here today as well. And then we have former board members Liz Durant, Matt Valander, and Bill Chapin are all with us tonight for our conversation on the annual meeting. So thank you all for joining us again, virtually, for the conversation. So moving on the agenda, we have additions and deletions by the superintendent. So Steve, are there any additions or deletions?
There was a late addition to the non-public folder. The board caught it for non-public minutes for April 16th. Those can be tabled if you haven't, but those were provided late. And then depending on how the beginning of the agenda goes and the discussion about executive order 38, the personnel preliminary nomination slate, that might not be necessary to talk about just because the requirements have changed. So those are just the possible changes to the agenda.
Perfect, thank you. And any correspondence?
Yes, there are some correspondence in the folder. There's a link to the latest issue of The Talon. If you haven't got that yet, that's there. There's a notice that Mr. Carosa will be live on WZID tomorrow morning doing his Good Morning Harold Martin. He'll do that for New Hampshire. There's an email that was sent to me, who then she asked if I would share it with the board regarding about the, have us in the board to consider when it discusses any changes into the end of school. And I did put executive order 38 as a correspondence.
Great, thank you. All right. And so we have the approval of the minutes. Because we're virtual, all of our votes are going to be roll call votes. And so it's a little, it works out fine. It may take a few minutes. That's probably the right way to say that. So bear with us, everybody. And so is there a motion to recommend that the Huffington School Board approve the minutes of our last regular school board meeting held on April 16th, 2021?
I move to approve the April 16th minutes.
Rob seconded. Perfect. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll call the roll. So Andrea.
Andrew Folsom votes yes.
Norm?
Norm Goopel votes yes.
Seth?
Seth Afrim, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Jim O'Brien votes yes. So that motion carries 5-0 and the minutes are approved. And so as Steve mentioned, there was a set of non-public meeting minutes that got inserted into the folder a little bit late. And so if you, I see Norm shaking his head, so I'm assuming people probably haven't read those. And so what we can do is let's table that and we can come back to those at our next meeting and make sure those are approved. Everybody okay with that? See nodding, perfect. So we'll move on to the first public comment this evening. And so if you're a participant, if you scroll down towards the bottom of your screen there in your controls, if you click on Participants, it'll bring up a list. And then there should be a button down there that says Raise Your Hand or something equivalent to that. That should alert me that you have public comments that you wish to make and I can bring you over and unmute you as soon as I can find my list of participants. And the only thing I would suggest for now, because we have two, we have this public comment and then the next public comment. If you have questions pertaining to the annual meeting discussion, I would just ask you to wait on those because we may not have answers for those questions because we haven't got into the discussion yet and heard from, from the moderator about some of his ideas and how they may have changed. So if you have public comments, we'd love to hear them. If you have questions on things that aren't pertaining maybe to the annual meeting or other discussion topics, I'll just ask you to maybe to hold on to those questions. But otherwise, I, bear with me one second, everyone. I'm sorry, I seem to have lost all my participants. I can't find where they are. So I am going to struggle here in front of you all for, for a minute. All right, I apologize, I found them. So Colby Malcolm, I am going to unmute. You should be unable to unmute yourself. Perfect, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. First off, I just want to thank you all. I'm a, I'm a current high school senior and I just want to thank you all for the hard work that you've been putting in over the course of this crisis. And I know that we wouldn't be where we are right now without your leadership. Earlier this week, I wrote a piece in our high school newspaper, The Talon, advocating for pass/fail grading. And when I was writing the piece, I spoke with numerous high school students who are currently struggling due to some outside responsibilities that have been brought on by the coronavirus pandemic. For example, one student who is a ninth grader was forced to clean, cook, and go grocery shopping for their household because their mother contracted the virus and had to isolate herself from her family. Another student became responsible for running household errands because their mother has asthma and is at high risk of death due to the virus. Other students are tasked with looking after their younger siblings now that they're home or assisting elderly neighbors and relatives. And all of these students expressed that they were struggling with devoting the necessary time and effort to their studies. And these students communicated to me that they would see a pass/fail grading system as highly beneficial to their situations. I believe that a pass/fail system would provide the maximum support to these students. In speaking with some members of our administration, it's been communicated to me that our community definitely doesn't face a lot of the same issues that other districts are facing right now. And while we are very fortunate to be such a privileged community, I want to, I, I'm strongly against that kind of thinking. I think we need to make sure that what we're doing is in the best interest of everyone. And I think we need to remember that there are still members of our community that are struggling with these types of issues and that not everyone is as fortunate as the majority. And it's my firm belief that we should change our grading policy during this crisis to provide the maximum support to everyone in our school community. And I urge our school board and our administration to implement a pass/fail system. And I just want to thank you so much for hearing me and thank you for your time.
Thank you for participating, Colby, and for your very thoughtful comments. And I also want to thank you for your well-written article. I know it's been circulating around and then Steve had, the superintendent had put into our packet a link to, to the student newspaper, which contained your, your article. So thank you for writing and thank you for bringing this issue forward to the board and to the town. And Steve, maybe I'll just, I know that you've, you've reported on sort of the conversations we've asked, this question's been asked. I'm just wondering if you can provide just a very brief update on sort of what, what you've been, the conversations you've had with your leadership team around this issue.
Sure. Chris and I have had a number of discussions, which is still evolving and some opportunities. I think as the board requested, the May 7th, we'll have more report when, when Chris attends and is panelist about where we are with the grading and where we are and, and the reasons behind the recommendations at that point. But Chris talked to a lot of people, a lot of teachers. We appreciate the feedback, the article from Colby, and I think all this factors in as we try to put forward what's best for kids. But I think we'll be ready for a May 7th update and where we're at, at the next, you know, a quote unquote planned school board meeting.
Perfect, thank you, Steve. Anybody else? I see another hands raised now for public comments. So I just want to make sure people have the opportunity if they have a comment they wish to bring forward. All right, so we'll move, oh, no, we got one. All right. Mary, I'm going to unmute you. You should be able to unmute yourself, Mary, and provide your comment. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, I joined in late. I just want to ask, verify, are we in public comment one or public comment two?
Oh, I wish we moved that fast. No, we're, we're still in public comment one.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, so we will move on in the agenda. So we have no presentations and staff reports this evening, so we'll hop right into items for board discussion. And we'll start with the Huffington School District Annual Meeting Procedures. So.
Are you not allowed any comments from the board?
Norm, you caught me. Yeah, of course I will, I'm sorry. I was so excited to move ahead on that, actually. The comments from the Huffington.
We know Norm talks the most on comments, Jim, so.
Well Norman, because you talk so much for comments, why don't you, why don't you pick us off? You must have something to say.
I have a lot, no, I have, no, just a couple of things real quick. I just wanted to say thank you to the, you know, the fire department and the police department over the last couple of weeks from them supporting, you know, my friend running her first marathon for suicide awareness, Katie Federer. I just thought it was a great scene to see in our community. This weekend, I attended a birthday parade and it was just really great to see all the kids lined up on Main Street celebrating our students' birthday. It was really great to see them. They were practicing social distance, people wearing masks, and it was great to see. Last thing is, I just want to say thank you to the teachers. You know, the last couple of weeks, I've just seen a lot of great communication with our kids in video chat. I think I video bombed Alyssa Chapins and Ms. Roberts' class a couple of times because my kids are at work. But just the interaction with the students have been great and I'm, it's very, I'm very happy to see the kids happy when they see each other because this is a very, very tough time. So, and Colby, I just wanted to say your article was great and I look forward to hearing from Chris next week regarding the recommendation. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Norman, thanks for catching me on that one. I would move to Andrea, any comments this evening?
Just quickly, just wanted to give a virtual hello to everybody out there. I know as week six is dragged on, I certainly am missing my in-person social interactions. And I also, to echo Norm, just want to say how great the teachers are doing. You know, I, I mentioned to my son, second grade teacher today, that watching a Zoom call is like watching someone trying to herd cats. And I am constantly impressed with the, the grace and kindness in which it's, it's been done. And my kids are on Zoom calls now every day and are really, they're going really well. So just a big thank you and hang in there. That's pretty much it.
Thanks Andrea, you guys are easier than herding cats. How about Seth?
Well first, I want to apologize to everyone for offering April vacation on the dreariest, most miserable day of 2020. We didn't do very well on that. Let me also congratulate Colby and the rest of the writers for The Talon. I was very impressed with the online version. It's amazing when you're forced to do something and then you do it and then how good it comes out. I thought it looked, looked really professional. And let me just congratulate everyone on their perseverance on both the teacher side of the computer and the student side of the computer. This is difficult, it's long, but I think in the end, we're going to be proud of ourselves and have learned that we can adapt and we can change and we can learn. I've learned all sorts of technologies that scared me and now I am better at them and you are all better at them. And so, you know, it's a, it's a small silver lining, but you know, I think we have to look for them in these really difficult times. And I just congratulate everybody for their perseverance in what is not an easy or really good situation.
Thank you, Seth. Rob? Rob, you're on mute.
Something my students probably wished could have happened a long time ago. Everybody had spoken quite well on, on the topics of the day, so all quiet over here on Sugar Hill. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. We'll move to our, our student members. Ella.
I would just like to say thanks to the high school administration and male school for setting up a pizza day later, I think next week. Sounds pretty cool and it's a good way to get out of the house and not be lazy all day.
Very important, appreciate that. Not the pizza day, but getting out and not being lazy. And Charles?
Well, I kind of had my comments stolen, but I was going to say, not by Ella, but by other members of the board, I was going to comment on how professional I thought The Talon looked and I was just going to compliment them. Other than that, just kind of echo everyone else.
Thanks, Charles, and thanks guys for, for joining us as, as usual tonight. I don't know that I have any comments. I, I guess I would just want to thank James Newsom, who we're going to hear from in just a few minutes, because I know that he has been working really hard before our last meeting and then from the last meeting, just last week to today, he's put a lot of time, effort and thought into sort of moving this, this annual meeting forward. And so, and we'll all have opinions and thoughts and reflections on it, but I just, I just want to signal out James for his dedication and the amount of work and thinking that he's put into trying to, trying to pull off an annual meeting, which in these times is not, is not easy. So James, thank you very much for your efforts. All right, so now I can read the agenda that's right in front of me and know that I can move into items for board discussion and start this conversation or continue our conversation on the annual meeting procedures. And so I've, I've thought a little bit about, this is a lot of moving parts and so it's trying to determine or figure out how to facilitate a conversation on this that, that has some rhyme or reason to it. I'm not going to promise it has complete rhyme or reason. So I've traded some, I had a couple of conversations today with, with Andrea, Steve, and with James and have, have attempted to put together, I'm going to share this, to put together just a, a kind of a, some questions that I think we have to answer as we sort of step through the process of if and how we move forward within, within annual meeting. And so, so here's to the best of our abilities, what we sort of come up with for, for some of, how, how we want to engage in this dialogue. And these aren't going to be, I assume we're going to, these are going to run somewhat together as, as we have a conversation on, on these questions. So it won't be as, we won't go through each bullet point and then stop and do the other bullet points, it's going to kind of come together. But we felt that, you know, these five areas are ones that I think we need to get, can, well, we don't need to get agreement or consensus because it is James's decision as moderator, but I think he wants our input in collaboration on this. I don't want to say, I want to be clear, decision-making is James's, but I think our input and cooperation is vitally important to the process. So just walk through this really quickly, you know, we'll, I want to talk a little bit about Governor Sununu's emergency order that was issued yesterday and what that means and maybe what it doesn't mean and see if we have a shared understanding of that. And then, you know, walk through what it means to have a safe annual meeting. Is that something we feel that we can move forward with and accomplish during the state of emergency? And then, you know, should we move forward with an annual meeting, a safe annual meeting under this, under the state of emergency? And then, you know, can the moderator in the meeting develop a meeting format? And this is really the rules conversation that James has drafted and circulated, that is clear, transparent, fair, accessible, and unbiased. Those are a lot of things, but can we create a format that is, is fair? That's probably the shorthand version. And then finally, you know, can we as a district design a process that enables us to communicate with registered voters that again is clear, transparent, and unbiased? Those are sort of some of the, the questions and hurdles we hope to get through tonight. You know, I think if we answer no to some of these, then that may be telling to our process and how we move forward or choose to move forward. But this felt like at least one way that we can organize this conversation, so they step us through some of the questions that we have to answer and really gets to James's preparatory materials that we hope to dive into. So unless there's objection, and maybe I'll just ask, is there an objection to, to at least using this as sort of a format for our discussion? I see no objection and I wasn't going to wait too long. And so we're going to start moving this forward. And I just think as we get into the conversation, I would just ask those who want to jump in, just, you know, use that hand raise button to, to just let me know that you have something to say and I'll unmute you guys, I'll call on you so you can unmute yourself and you can kind of move through the process as we have been. For those, I know there's a few of us that are on the phone that aren't in front of a computer to raise their hand. I would just ask you to, when there's a, when there's a lull, just, just unmute yourself and hop right in. We won't take offense, I promise. So if we follow this, the first, the first item here is a shared understanding of the governor's emergency order. So I'm just going to put that on the screen. And I'm sure that not everybody here has seen it or read it. And so I figure we can walk through it a little bit together and then maybe ask James and Steve if they have thoughts they want to add to it. So yesterday, Governor Sununu issued what is Emergency Order Number 38, which really, really is a directive to school districts, so it's really about us as districts. And so I am going to skip through all the wherayses in this, there's, there's a lot of them, and get into the meat of the emergency order. So this first paragraph here, I'll highlight it and then unhighlight it just so you know where I am. The piece references an RSA, and this is an existing RSA that authorizes local municipal governing bodies, so our town government, to be able to expend dollars while they don't have an approved budget. And so if you think of our town, our, the town's is on a calendar budget cycle and so their fiscal year runs January 1st through December 31st. Our annual meeting is not, is normally in March and so the town operates for three months without an approved budget. That's allowed under this RSA. The school districts, we don't have that same authority under statute. And so what this emergency order does is that it allows the school districts to operate in this time of, under emergency, to operate akin to the towns that we can spend up to pretty much last year's budgeted amount. And there's, there's some language in here that helps us make determinations of, of, you know, how, how to have reasonable appropriations. There was a question that was, that came up because the statute, this RSA 3213, talks about municipalities on a calendar fiscal year. So again, that January 1st to December 31st, it doesn't make reference to a fiscal year in, that we have. So the, our district's fiscal year is July 1st to June 30th. So there's a question of whether or not this order would apply to, to the Huffington because of our fiscal year calendar rather than a calendar year. I think I got that right. And so we reached out to the Attorney General's office to get a better understanding from them of how, what their interpretation, what their intention was. And so they replied saying that, that it would, that would cover us, it wasn't intended to not cover us having, having a fiscal year. And then, um, these are all important, but it may be just for the purpose of this conversation to skip over a couple of these and go to this one under number three. And this has to do with the requirement in statute for nominations and contracts for teachers, which as we've been discussing for some time now, in statute, that deadline is May 15th, which we've, we've talked a lot about what that deadline means and why an annual meeting is important. And so the last line waves that requirement on, to have those contracts done by May 15th. Doesn't mean that we don't have to have contracts, it just, it extends that deadline for us. There's, again, there's some other things in here, but I think for the purpose of this conversation, those are probably the two most pertinent ones that this executive, it's on, this emergency order covers. So maybe I'll stop and ask James and, and then Steve if they want to add anything to that or, or just share their thoughts on what this means and what it doesn't mean. If it does, it doesn't complicate our lives.
Sure, I'll just do a couple of quick things. I was at a, a meeting today with Will Phillips, who's the School Boards Association attorney, and he wanted to make sure that, because he knew that Huffington was in this predicament, that this order aligns as long as there's a state of emergency. And the state of emergency ends right now at the end of May. So without that extension, we may, this, the ability to do this has an, it runs coterminous with the state of emergency. So that may be, if it's extended, that's not an issue, but if the order is revised in a different way, we may run up to that burden. But he wanted to make sure that I shared that. The other piece is this executive order doesn't address contracts for support staff, which the statute says is the last day of school, that contracts would have to be given. I don't, I didn't, I don't see that this adjusts as the teacher, but not the statutory requirement for support staff, which if we end school early, we'd be forced to, again, let, without a budget or without something, impact that, which means notices of non-returns for lots of people, which impacts health insurance and all that fun stuff. So the other piece is the key word, and I did talk to, you know, is what is reasonable, right, is what's the set? And I know I talked to Neil in the past, Jim, I guess in your world, it was level funded from what the previous year was reasonable. So that's obviously has implications going forward. Those are my three thoughts, that's okay.
No, it's great, thanks, Steve. James, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I don't because this is really something that affects you guys more than me, in that this is something that you would have to live with if, only if I decide to postpone it. So, but I think the big things, I think you and Steve both touched on pretty accurately and thoroughly.
Thanks, James. And so I guess at this point, I'd just love to open the floor to anybody who has comments, questions, you know, suggestions, thoughts on, on, on the emergency order and anything that it means for sort of our conversations as we, as we get going here today. Everybody's so quiet.
All right, can I unmute? I just unmuted, is that all right?
Oh, that's, yes, that's great, thank you. Thank you.
So, and thank you.
So, and thank you for the clarification on the executive order. I had followed the thread of emails last night a little bit and trying to understand just, you know, what it entailed. So your, your comments were appreciated to clarify some of it. So, and I guess that, you know, my, from my, from my position at this point as past board chair is that, I mean, I, I feel very strongly that I believe we should continue to move forward with the process that we've started to outline to have this meeting. I think that given the, you know, given the, the implications of holding things off and just continuing to have uncertainty as opposed to allowing the community to be able to have their opportunity to, to weigh in and vote on an operating budget and contracts and contingency and trust funds. I feel, I feel very strongly that we should be moving forward to have this meeting as we have talked about up to this point.
Thanks, Liz. Rob?
Yeah, I, I agree with Liz. I think that it's good that we have this and the, the legal pressure is off, but I think the, the reality is we need to keep moving forward and the best way for us to move forward is to know what our budget is going to be rather than making assumptions about that. You know, so, so I, I think this is good. I just, I would like to continue the process forward.
I, sorry, can I go, Jim? I remember talking. I, I would like potentially to see maybe it pushed out a week. We had a pretty good draft from a community member suggesting a good timetable on how we can schedule out, you know, the community for this. You know, with one week to go, I feel like we would not be able to educate the community necessarily with what they need to know in order to make sure that they understand what they're voting on. And I think it was, you know, I know some of the board members, I know Janet's seen it, the town, the school moderator's seen it. I think it's a good template for this board to review and look at and see that there's a lot of good communication, non-biased on there that would help communicate the information to our, to our taxpayers. And I really thought the schedule was clear and really well thought out. And I think Delsey did a great job on it. And I would definitely encourage this board to review that, that outline and implement it possibly for the next meeting.
Billy Chapin?
Good, okay, I guess. Yeah, just, just regards to this extension of a contract. It doesn't, you know, it, it's tricky deciding, you know, if we extend it to Rob's point or to the points before, who do you, whose contract do you extend if we have, you know, last year's budget or, you know, a proposed budget? I mean, you don't know that number. It doesn't really get us out of jail if, if you kind of sense that. You know, the extension helps, it really doesn't help the full piece of it, if that makes any sense at all. I don't know.
I got you. Andrea? Oh, I'm sorry, Billy. I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's, that's just it. I, I just think that the extension of the deadline on those contracts is, is interesting, but you just, who are you going to issue a contract for if you have a budget that's, you know, a million and a half dollars lower or $10 lower? I mean, you just don't know. So it still doesn't answer the question of, you know, what's this year's budget? What should it look like? So I, like the others, I am interested in all the things you highlighted in terms of, of creating a fair and a reasonable and a safe place to have a meeting. And I know this is tough. This is tricky stuff. So I will mute myself.
Thanks, Billy. I got Andrea and then Seth.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I was glad to see these come out. I, I have some concerns about us moving forward with, you know, drive-through voting. I, I have concerns about making sure that we are not, that we're hitting everyone in town, that people have access to the information, that people have a clear understanding of what they're voting for and what they're voting on. I want to make sure that people are feeling safe and I don't, I don't know, I worry that we're, we're, we may not be able to, to, to do that, to make people feel safe. And I, and I would worry that we, though some legal aspects haven't been taken care of, I think that there are other, you know, issues that we would want to be, to be cautious about, to make sure that people feel that they are heard and that things are really being presented in a way that, that everyone feel, that, just that everyone feels heard and not disenfranchised at all. So I guess, you know, I, I kind of see these as a, as a good thing right now. I would at base recommend that we push the meeting out and not do it on the 6th, push it out another week, kind of at minimum. I think that there are certainly some contracts that we can get on and, and start to issue, even if it's not all of them at this point. I don't know, I just, I feel like we need to do what we can now while making sure that we are staying safe and that things remain accessible. I, I think it is tricky to look at Hopkinton in comparison to Bo. I know Bo has done the drive-through and we're just two different balls of wax. And so I don't know if it's really comparable. And, and there were definitely some things from last week's meeting that gave me real pause of people saying that they might not feel comfortable, you know, being able to run the elections. And I just, I guess those are some things that are top of my mind right now. I'm just like accessibility, safety and access to information. I think that is key. I, I do think that running a tight, good communications campaign is, is important. I still worry about missing people.
Thanks, Andrea. Seth?
Jim, I just had a question, what we think our options are under the governor's order? So it doesn't say you, you have to, it said, it just says the contract issuing requirement is waived. So if we did not have a meeting, does that mean we just don't, we just don't issue contracts or non- notices at this point? Is that what that means to us? Maybe that's for Steve.
So, and the requirement to put, to issue them where it is waived, however, we can't secure a staff until we have them under contract. So the longer we have teachers without a, under a contract, the more potential is that they look for other jobs and it's difficult for us to staff.
So you're, regardless of this, your advice would be that we issue, as we were talking about before, as many contracts as we thought we could?
Certainly, having the majority of staff under contract is better than not having anyone under contract. But my, my hope would be that we design a safe way to have the meeting and, and we know how much, what the, what the number is that we can issue and program that we can have so we can begin planning. But if the board, if the board decide, or James decided not to do a meeting, then we would talk about what is the reasonable amount? And yes, I would like to have teachers under contract so we can staff for next year.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Rob, and then I'm going to throw in my two cents.
I was thinking about, you know, when another form of meeting might be able to happen. And I don't think any of us can forecast that what we typically do is going to be reasonably possible. We talked about perhaps an outside meeting and just observing people in the universe and those that are choosing to social distance and those that are choosing not to social distance for various reasons. I would be very, very concerned about having a big group of people in a field, some that might choose to congregate, some that might choose not to, the ability to focus, sound, et cetera. I, I think that the path forward that we have, while not perfect, is probably our safest route. I definitely agree with Norm and, and Andrea that, you know, pushing this out a week and taking a look at the timetable that's been put forward to us makes a lot of sense. But I just don't think the future is predictable enough for us to say we can put this off to some point and it will be better. We just don't know when that's going to be. I'll mute myself.
And Matt has requested to jump in before me because he has a snazzy quick comment. Matt?
No, I don't. I, I just appreciate you ending it. I, I, I don't know, there's reference to some documents and I don't know if I'm, if I should have seen them. So I haven't seen the proposal for moving it out a week, but I would agree with, with what was just shared, that I don't think it's predictable enough for us to push it out. I don't, I don't know necessarily what would be gained by, by doing so. And I believe it is, it is very important for the staff, for those considering whatever their options might be, and for the community to understand as soon as possible what the budget will look like for next year so that other decisions can be made. And so for what it's worth, my recommendation would be to continue, although not optimal, continue with the plan that, that James has been drafting with other members of the leadership team and, and move forward as best as we can on, on the next fiscal year.
Kim, can I make a comment?
Rich, you're stealing my thunder again. Yeah, go ahead, buddy.
The thing that concerns me about the contracts, both the Teamsters and the school, the teachers' contract, is that these are three-year contract and I think the other one is a five-year contract. And when we were deliberating these contracts, it was in a different economy. And there's a lot of people that have lost their jobs and, and not going to be making certainly as much, much money over the next few years. And had we known this, I, I'm not sure that we would have agreed to the teachers' raises and, and all the, the people weighed in on that. So I was wondering as an alternative, rather than having a three-year contract, could we extend just the first year of, of both of those contracts until such a time that we can meet as a community and decide if we want to vote on a, a full three-year or a five-year contract? It, it concerns me that, that we would be doing a drive-through meeting without the people weighing in fully for the next three to five years under the present economic
Thanks, Rich. I think the contracts right now, for the teachers and the Teamsters are up or down votes. And so they, they can't be, at this point, they can't be amended without, I think, a renegotiation for what it's worth.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So I, I'll just say my piece. I, so I start off not thinking so much about, at least for the meeting, not so much about the school district and our needs. I'm thinking about the community and sort of what we're, what we're asking of people. And so we're operating as a state and as a nation under an emergency order. And so, and the governor has laid out what that means and through a series of these emergency orders, you know, what that means and what it doesn't mean. And, you know, we're also under a stay-at-home order. I think that's what it's called. It's called something similar to a stay-at-home order, where we're being asked not to congregate, we're being asked not to do things for the safety of, of all of us. And so I think as I've been thinking about this, having a, a meeting, you know, what was, what's been compelling to me has been the, the need for the contracts, the need to keep as many of our teachers understanding where they're going and then knowing that if July 1st rolls around and we don't have a budget, we can't operate as a district. And so, so that was compelling to me to try to have a conversation about how we can, how we can hold an annual meeting in an emergency format by doing away with sort of our normal procedure and coming up with a new procedure in order to accomplish, accomplish some of those goals. And so with this, what, what I'm seeing here in this, this emergency order is, is an answer to some of our concerns or at least some of the concerns that I had that was a driving force behind why we would move forward in some ways in, in finding the executive order in sort of the emergency that we're under. And so because the governor has provided us with an alternative, an alternative that, that gives us clarity, it may not be the clarity that we all like, but it is clarity for how we can continue district operations until such time as in the emergency that we're all living under is lifted and then we can resume a different normal and, and maybe move into a different normal. That's compelling to me because we're not putting anybody in an unsafe situation, no matter how safe we make it. We are operating under an emergency and there is a pandemic. And so whatever we do has risk associated with it. So I, I feel more compelled because we have been given, we have been given, we have been given the tools in order to see a path forward that doesn't require us having to come up with a, a new procedure for an annual meeting. And then I would just say, I, I don't think the governor would have issued such an emerg, such an emergency order if they didn't feel compelled for us to rethink moving forward with, with meetings and congregating people together, no matter how we can, we can do it. I think they issued, he issued, I shouldn't say they, I think the governor issued this as a way for us to sort of rethink maybe what Bo has done and to give us the tools to add, to reasonably rethink that. And so for me, it's given me a lot of pause to rethink sort of what we're doing and why. And I understand it's not, it doesn't provide all the clarity for everybody that we would want to provide, but it does provide a path forward that we can work around, albeit not a perfect working situation. So anyway, that's where my head is for what it's worth. Billy, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just, just, just a clarity piece. I think a lot, you know, it's, it's funny, a lot is held here with this meeting with James. Now, my understanding is, is that James deems the meeting like, you know, unfair or, or something in the process didn't work, maybe there was a stop or what have, what have you, or it doesn't go, you know, there isn't the amount of participation that sort of we had hoped. I, I just want a clarity. Now, can he deem that meeting irrelevant, invalid? Can he throw it out if it, if it is, you know, deemed unfair, unsafe or what have you?
James, why don't you hop on in and tell us all about your powers?
Well, first, that, I, I've kind of addressed that in the proposed rules, that if I find that it's unworkable or something's going wrong, that I would have the ability to, to sort of stop the process at any time. That would be in the rules that would need to be approved by the voters. So it's not my rules at that point, it's the meeting's rules. Who would get, who would be the ones granting me that authority? At this point, as Jim kind of hinted at, the, the powers that I have now are to either move forward or postpone. That's kind of the decision right now. And I certainly appreciate all these comments. And forgive me if other people had some, but I'm going to, since I have the microphone now, I'm going to chime in a little bit more. On one issue that I don't think I've heard yet is that part of the choice here is whether or not we want to let the governor and this order keep us at essentially a flat budget or pose the question to the voters and let the voters decide whether it be a flat through an amendment or through the proposed budget from the Budget Committee and School Board's numbers. And I think there's a lot of value in letting the voters decide. That value I think arises from the knowledge of what we have going forward versus the uncertainty of when this could change and have the meeting. For example, if this emergency order goes into September, we'd be operating on a flat budget, the teachers for that year would be hired under that lower amount. And then we have a meeting, we get the proposed budget, but there aren't any teachers to hire and there's no way to really spend that. So we're kind of stuck with that number, I think, from a practical standpoint. Whereas if we move forward sooner rather than later... Whereas if we move forward sooner rather than later, we'd be giving that authority to the voters instead of the governor and five school board members deciding what reasonable is. And I can say for sure right now is that there will be a postponement. The meeting, I, I'm confident on the ninth will not be the, the plan. Whether it's one week or two weeks after or beyond, I'm still not 100% sure on, but the ninth, I agree with all the comments that that's just not a workable plan at this point.
Thanks, James. Rob?
Yeah, on the, the question of what is reasonable, as I read that in, you know, reasonable in light of prior years appropriations and expenditures, I think one could also draw the conclusion that you could look at what was a percentage increase year over year as what would be a reasonable number, not necessarily a flat number. We, it is not typical that we have a flat number. It's, you know, and, you know, even in the other stuff that went to the Budget Committee, you could use that as a model and say that's your reasonable number. So I don't think that, I personally wouldn't be wed to the flat number if that was the route we chose to go, but I'm still for forging ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Rob. I think I was using flat just as a shorthand way of, because that's how somebody had, had explained it to me based on that last year's number. So yeah, I was using it as shorthand, but thank you for that clarification.
I think other folks may have been, you know, in the last day, some chatter about that that might be the reality. And, you know, reasonable is tricky stuff. And when it says in light of prior years, that to me would imply an increase.
Anything else on the emergency order? I mean, we have a bunch more topics to talk about and I'm sure it's going to come back into our, into our discussion at some point. So.
Yeah, Jim.
Yes, please.
Sorry, that's okay. No, and I appreciate all the, all the comments. I guess, swinging, just swinging back to my original input on it is that I, I appreciate the, the level of complexity that is going into the idea of having a meeting that is going to be safe, secure. You know, I, I haven't heard from Jean yet on this and I guess I would be curious just to get quick input from her after our conversations last week about the, you know, the, the comfort and safety of the, of the checklist folks. So, you know, based on what James has drafted and what is sort of on the table right now, I'm still very much, whether it's the 15th, I mean, that, I'm leaving, I leave that to James's expertise and all the responsibility that he carries right now with determining what a reasonable date would be for having this meeting. But I, I'm still very much in favor of letting the voters have the, the opportunity to be able to determine what the school district budget should be as of July 1. But I would be curious, Jean, I know, I don't know if you have, you know, had an opportunity to talk with some of your folks since James drafted those procedures.
So, thanks, Liz. So Jean, I'm gonna let you talk in one second. I just, so that is the next item on a sort of our bulleted list was, you know, the question around, you know, can we do, undertake a safe annual meeting that allows for pretty much participation equally during the state of emergency? And so that, Liz, it was a good setup because I think Jean is the first to go on this one and talk a little bit about.
You're welcome.
You know, what, what you're thinking, Jean, in terms of, of you and the other supervisors?
We have definitely been talking about it. And as I said before, if we do the drive-up, one of us will not be able to be there for sure. The other two are waiting to see what the final thing is. I, right now, I'm planning I would be able to do it. The biggest concern, I think, is just in general for everyone. I mean, you've got, not only the school board will be there all day or for the hours that it would be open, but the other, you know, other people helping out, there's talk about, there'd be people there trying to campaign for different positions, trying to talk to voters as they come in. There's that issue of how, you know, how is that going to be socially distanced? People who choose to not come in a car, but we would ask them to have a mask on and how are we going to enforce that? I mean, there's that, there's a lot of safety concerns from the supervisors. So that's it. But I do, I just want to add one thing. I just, I had sent a note to James about this just now saying, thank you for extending, at least postponing it at least a week because I think the ninth is, it's a week from Saturday. And that just is, that's crazy. Okay, that's all I have to say.
And we had to thank the Select Board for deciding not to hold their meeting on the 16th so that Saturday was available if, if we choose to use it. Seth, you had your hand up, then you took it down and then you put it back up.
I'll add a question. Back to the executive order. So I tend to agree with Rob that reasonable wouldn't necessarily mean a flat budget, but I guess what I'm wondering, so just playing this out a little bit, the, the authority expires, as I understand it, when the state of emergency expires. But that also, it also seems unreasonable to me that we're going to be allowed to have groups in a gym of 500 people even if we don't have a state of emergency. So, I mean, how would it play out if we, if we just didn't, if we went forward with the authority the governor has given us? When the state of emergency expires, we would just try to have a meeting at that time? Would that be the plan, the, the way you would proceed and have it in whatever way we can at that point? I'm trying to figure out, are we going to be in a better position to have a meeting that's meaningful if we postpone and use our reasonable spending authority? Or are we just going to end up in a worse situation?
I agree that there may be some uncertainty to be able to hold what we think of as the way we normally hold a meeting, even when the emergency order ends. That, that would be a big question mark down the road if we, if we don't go forward sooner.
Okay. I, I mean, on this one, on the safe piece, I, I don't, so one thought on my mind is sort of a liability question. And I, so, so if we move forward and we have, we have a meeting and something happens or somebody comes down with, with COVID or whatever, you know, kind of draw your own, your own, what could happen, what could go wrong scenario? Is there any liability on us, on the town? Because we do have, we do have an emergency order that gives us a different set of options and gives us the ability not to move forward with the meeting. We chose to move under an emerg, under an emergency, state of emergency, to ignore that and go forward with the meeting that, well, eliminating risks still is a risk. And I'm just, and I don't know the answer, or any of us know the answer, but I'm just, that's on my mind is what is sort of a liability piece around us doing so when we're sort of, we're not being directed, but I think I would just suggest we're being strongly encouraged to not have gatherings of people in this way. So that's, that's a question that I have. And then the only other one I would just ask out loud is, you know, if, if under the state of emergency that we have, our governor and others are encouraging certain, certain amongst us not to venture out of our homes and not to engage in any sort of interactions with others, if we are providing what would be a safe meeting spot, especially for those people who are elderly, who may have under other conditions, there isn't an option that they can do a mail-in ballot, there's not an option that they can do an absentee. The only option would be to participate as everybody else is participating, which carries risk. And so are we creating a safe environment for those folks? And then two, or are we discouraging them from participating and are we encouraging to violate sort of what is being suggested for them? I don't know the answers to all those questions, but that's what's sort of running through my mind as, as I think about the safety of an annual meeting and the risk associated with it. Norm?
James, a quick question. I forget the answer for this, but how much of advance do you have to let us know of a date so there's enough time for us to prep? How much of a notification?
I'm not sure what the statute says for that. But I think it's fairly flexible for me to, to postpone during, for emergency situations. So, but I'm not sure. You'd have to look up RSA 44A or something like that, I believe, but.
Okay.
Bill?
Yeah, thanks. There's been some discussion, I think Andrea, Andrea brought it up as well, about the meeting in Bo. Can we talk about what worked in Bo and what did not work? I understand there was high turnout. We don't know if anyone has been infected with COVID based upon, you know, having to participate in that meeting. But we've always sort of looked at Bo as seeing us not necessarily as totally different. So can somebody elaborate on what worked in Bo and what didn't? And, and perhaps a way we could change that? Thank you.
We happen to have a resident of Bo with us here tonight. Steve, if you have any thoughts on, on, you know, you participated, so what worked? And you probably followed it more closely than the rest of us. If you don't mind.
So, so now, and in my family, we did it two different ways. So Bo did allow for the printing at home or for the getting a ballot at the place. My, my wife got the ballot there. So I'll just tell you how I did it with my son. I drove into Bo High School at, my Chamberlain was 9 to 11 and I went at 10:30 and there was a no line. I was met at one corner by a police officer. The police officer was just was running traffic. I pulled up, I had my license and Bo, you have to present your license. My window was up, I had my ballot already filled out, my son had his ballot already filled out, he had his license. I held up the license, the window was still shut. He saw, the person there saw it, the checklist people were about 10 feet away from him. He was in a mask with gloves, but my window never came down. He read my name to the checklist, checked it off. He read my son's name to the checklist, checked it off. They asked, did I have my ballot? Yes, so I went to the, already had the ballot line. There was no one within six feet of the box, they were just watching. I mean, there wasn't, and I put myself, put the, my ballot in the box. I put my son's ballot in the box and I drove home and there was no line. Now, my wife didn't print the ballot, she drove up, showed the line, they, she went to a different little stall, was handed a ballot through the window, she filled it out in the car, she went up and then she put it in. So there was no electioneering on, there was no influence, there was just a drive-in, came out, it was around the whole building. They had seven, for a meeting without a facility project or without a teacher's contract, it was about 700 people. Typically, it's about 300 people. So I think it actually encouraged more people to vote than they would have had that Friday night. They're typically the Friday before we are, we're typically Saturday. Positive reviews, they, they went through these issues and concerns, but overall, from the board chair who I spoke to there, it was very well received. It was also the topic at the, the Council of School Attorneys was, how do you, there are about 10 school districts that are working this out. One of the concerns, and I appreciate, and one of the pluses, and I've spoke, Tom, I've spoken with Tom Berry, who was there, is James's notion about how to amend the budget, Tom felt was a very strong proposal, trying to simulate a town meeting and felt that was a very strong piece, that if you could run a meeting and simulate an amendment to the budget, the Council of School Attorneys, James felt pretty good about your approach. And it was a topic of conversation just the other day. So, so we went a little bit beat, Bo didn't have an opportunity to amend the budget, James just put forth one.
Thanks, Steve. The only I would add, and wasn't obviously part of that, but, you know, they did, they operated, Bo did that before this emergency order came out. And so they, they were under the assumption, I think we have been, that they needed a budget, they didn't have authority to expend and they had a contract deadline. And so they moved forward with the meeting. That, that's changed and it changed following the Bo meeting. So there is that as well. Anything else that people want to comment on and, or discuss around sort of the safety aspects here? And we'll, you know, we'll dive into James's proposal in just a second, so there might be more conversation there.
Yeah?
Yep.
Just, just to get to what you're saying, because I'm interested in this too. Do you, are you implying that the governor did this motion because of something that happened at Bo? Because there was a safety issue or because they felt like they had to do it? Is that what you're alluding to? Or is that what the governor had said? It was a result, his decisions were a result because Bo had their meeting?
No, so I'm not trying to imply that. I'm implying just the timeframe was that Bo had the meeting under a different set of circumstances because they've been operating as we have been without, without any sort of relief and remedy. And so that's been changed. I don't want to imply that that came out because of the Bo meeting, but I, I would say that the Bo meeting has been in the news. And we're not, they're, we're not, and they weren't the only school district facing sort of these questions. And so I, I do know that they issued the emergency order to help school districts make decisions on meetings and how to move forward. And so the relief they provided, I think, was just that, it was trying to relieve districts of some of the questions that we've all had and Bo had, but I think Bo moved forward before that got issued. But I don't know, this, I don't know anything more than anybody does about the safety protocols or anything like that. Rob, I'm sorry, there you are.
That's fine. So two points. First, on the safety, and I can appreciate the concerns particularly about liability. I think we've all been operating under some sense of safety or an illusion of safety. But I think as, I think about how the Bo voting went and as Steve described it, it seems a lot safer than what we all experience when we go to the grocery store every other week or however often you're going. I think those protocols certainly are consistent with what folks are doing, however you're operating out there. In terms of the concerns about people campaigning, electioneering at the site, I would think that James might be able to consider a rule much like there's no campaigning in the polling place and seeing how our polling place is outside, that those parameters could be extended to school grounds for that day. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anything else people want to say on this one? The last thing I'll just add, because Rob, your points are good. So the, the emergency order we're operating under is around necessary travel and necessary gatherings. And so I think one could argue that grocery shopping and feeding yourself is a necessary, something you necessarily need to do. I don't know that, that this, in my mind, I struggle with whether or not an annual meeting when we have relief is a necessary travel that we would, we would expect people to undertake in terms of risk factors. So I do agree that what James has laid out is, is probably safer than going to some grocery stores. But again, in sort of where we are as a society, is this, is this the, a necessary piece of our engagement that we're asking people to do in order to, to live a daily life? And I, I don't know, I struggle with that question. But to me, the emergency order helps me think that through because there is relief where before there wasn't. So what I think next we should do is ask James to maybe walk us through the rules that we've been alluding to that he has drafted for our benefit so we can at least better understand the proposal that he has put forward. And James, I can pull those up if you'd like, so you can kind of walk through them. You don't have to read them, but however you want to do it, but I can sort of bring those up if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that would probably be helpful for everyone.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so these are, of course, just a draft as no decision to postpone and if so, to when has been made at this point. So it would basically be similar to the way we discussed last week in a three-part meeting. One benefit to moving it to the voting on the 16th and kind of working backwards is that those other two sessions would be official parts of the annual meeting. Where the first session would be the proposal of the rules by me, followed by the presentation of the articles like we would in a normal meeting by the school board. like we would in a normal meeting by the school board. Along with that would be a representative from the budget committee if they want to talk under Article One, which is the hearing reports from town committees, which they've done in the past and had indicated their desire to do so had we had the meeting back in March. We would also then for Article Two, which is the petition warrant article on SB two, hear from a representative of the petitioners of that article. It would be similar to, I think, similar to Bo, it would be a presentation for folks to watch and listen through, I'm not sure the technology, if it would be another Zoom and call in to get that information out. Following that, we'd have a period of public comment that would open up immediately following the meet, that session through midday, say on Thursday. Again, this is, the timing is is up in the air still at this point, obviously. So that would be probably about a day and a half for voicemail and email and possibly other electronic means to get comments, including proposed motions to amend from the voters and get that information into me. Which I would then take Thursday afternoon, Friday morning, going through all those motions. And those comments would be just like comments made at a regular meeting. They'd be included in the minutes. The voters making those comments would need to state their name and address, again, just like they were at the microphone. And I would ask that they be kept brief. And again, just like we would at a regular meeting as much as possible. And keep them concise and clear. So I know what they're, what they're saying. During that review, I'd create a summary. And again, this would kind of depend on how many there are. If there are five comments, probably just reading them and sharing with everybody on the next online session would work. If there's a lot of comments, probably a summary would be more effective and efficient for everybody's time. At that point, I'd also propose some amendments to the articles if warranted based on the comments. I would hope the school board could respond to those questions presented and motions. And then I'd be able to put those on the ballot. The trick here would be deciding what goes on there. So if there's two motions to amend that are very similar numbers, it doesn't make sense to put both on, just like at a regular meeting. We wouldn't vote on both of those. We'd vote whoever got there, in a regular meeting, it would probably be whoever got there first. I'm not sure how I would decide that. Maybe put them somewhere in between. I'm not sure on that aspect yet. And I won't be able to really determine that until I see what these comments and suggestions and motions might be. And then the second session, which for example, here I have it as Friday, would be where I'd be able to present all of these to the school board and the voters who listen in and watch and participate. The school board would be able to answer questions and get more information out. Then the Saturday would be the drive-through voting with the yes, no ballot, just like we always do. And because that could be required, requested by five voters, I'm going to pretend that we got that request on everything. The voting or the drive-through process would be similar to Bo's and would try to be designed to be as safe as possible for everybody participating. Let's see, where am I? The trick to all this, of course, would be the motions to amend and how those are voted on. Since normally at a meeting, we'd vote on the First Amendment. If it passes, we would probably then call the question, figuring that everybody who's going to vote for an amendment is going to vote for the amended article. But unfortunately, during this process, we won't know if that amendment passes until the end of voting has occurred. So I've proposed to set up as a contingent voting process. I'm not a fan of the word, but that's the best word that I can describe. So that that way we hear the first vote, followed by if it fails, then we may hear a Second Amendment. If that fails and there are no other amendments, we'd call the question on the proposed article. Similar to how I described this last week.
James, is it okay when we bring up the sample ballot, just so people can kind of get a sense of what?
Yeah, that would be great at this point. Thanks. And of course, what I neglected to say is the very first question on the ballot would be whether or not the voters approve these rules and procedures. That would be sort of the, the bellwether question. And if that fails, then nothing else on the ballot would be counted. And I would get to try again. Which would probably be, again, if we move forward with this process, I would guess, but haven't decided that if number one fails, that, and I'm not sure how it would work with the emergency order thirty-eight, if having the meeting, we could still avail ourselves of the reasonable budget at that point, if we tried to get one and didn't. I've reached out to the Attorney General and have not heard back yet for clarification on that. So then, as you can see on Article Three is where I put in potential motions that I was discussing. So are you in favor of amending the proposal and approving it? If it's yes, we get the vote and then, or we have the budget and we move on. If it fails, then we go to the second motion. And proceed that way. The others are pretty much straightforward, just yes or no. In theory, from Article eight down, eight through eleven, there could be amendments. At this point in time, I'm not foreseeing any. As typically in meetings, folks have had enough discussions at that point and want to get home and move the meeting towards conclusion. And of course, this is again, just an initial draft. One suggestion I've already heard and I like is looking at including ovals next to the yes, no, that we're used to, we're all used to filling in ovals on ballots to make that a clearer indication of how somebody is voting. So I think that is the main topics. Again, very similar to what we talked about last week. And hopefully you guys have had a chance to review and think about this. Because I know last week it was kind of all new and exciting as we were thinking about this and seeing it for the first time for, for most of us. So I guess now I'd be happy to, to try to answer any questions or hear any comments.
Thanks, James. It's still exciting. Billy.
I guess, thanks, James. I guess my question would be, would we have an idea of who is making the amendment? Or not? Or that's just something that you would accept as I've received this amount of numbers and this is the number I've come up with. I just, just, just simple question there. Thank you.
Certainly, all the comments would be included in the minutes of the meeting. So that information would be available at a later date. I have not thought about at this point whether or not to ask and consider having those motions made in the name of somebody at the, at the meeting itself. The difficulty is that normally in a meeting, we'd have it moved and then seconded. In this process, there's really no idea to know who's moving when. So the seconds are, could be problematic. But I'm sure we could, could control somebody on the school board to second everything just to make sure we have a fair and appropriate meeting. But that is an interesting question. So as we move forward with developing these rules between now and the formal proposal, that's something I will consider. So thank you.
Norm.
James, is there a way that on the ballot, we could have basically the school board vote and the budget committee vote? So, you know, people can see where we aligned with budget committee and the school board?
Depending on how wordy we want to be and in the goal of keeping this on one page, I would consider, like, consider that, yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Can we do that on a ballot? I mean, I know that's written on the warrant. And for the articles that we voted on, it's in the warrant. But it's probably just a question to look into whether or not you can record that information on a ballot. Because, because we haven't voted on all those.
Traditional meetings, we usually don't have a ballot. It's usually just the yes, no. But typically it is on the warrant. Well, the other option, well, we could try to fit on, I don't know how small a font we'd have to get. But instead of, for example, Article Four, are you in favor of the proposed teacher's contract? Which is typically how we would word it at a regular meeting. We could put on the actual language from the article. We'd have a very difficult time keeping it to one page at that point. And so that's a consideration, whether or not we want to think of it that way.
Yeah.
I'll consider that when, when sort of doing the next draft of the ballot design.
Yeah, it might be good to run it by district attorney, especially on the ones that are being warned that we want to make sure that the language that we're asking people to vote on is the language that a lawyer would want us to be asking people to vote on. I don't know how to say that better than that.
Well, certainly on Article Two, for SB two, that is from the that is from the warrant, because that does have the magic language on an SB two vote. The other articles, I don't think there's magic language, statutory language, the way there is on the other ones. So but I'll definitely look into that as well.
Andrea.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think when I took a look at this draft, I think you did a great job with wording, you know, going from motion Article Three, motion one, Article Three, motion two. I thought that that flowed really well. I think overall, though, I would actually just recommend going to two pages, either front and back or something like that. There's a lot of words and a lot of black already on this paper. There's not a lot of white space. I think that can get really confusing really quickly. And definitely with the, the bubbles and just making it super clear what exactly you're, you're voting for. But thank you for taking a crack at that.
Thanks.
Matt.
Thank you. Yeah, I do feel much, much better after, after seeing this. It does flow very nicely. A question, I'd wonder, James, if you considered the contingency? I know in the, in the number of years that I had been involved, when the operating budget has then decreased, conversations about increasing contingency have, have come up. And I don't know, I mean, obviously you couldn't do dollar for dollar, right? Depending on the on any of the decreases from Article Three. But I guess I'd be curious to know if you considered, you know, adding to contingency based on whatever the cuts might be in Article Three.
I was not aware of that and had not considered that at all at this point. So but if comments come into that effect, that could change what the ballot looks like. I'm, at this point, I was only anticipating amendments to the operating budget. But I could see if warranted based on comments, having others be amended as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
And certainly having a two-page from the beginning would give us plenty of room for that. So.
Phil.
I get older in life and I don't pay attention as much to this stuff. I'm going to, you know, be entrusting budget committee, school board. And their votes or how they went about this, and I'm understanding that they put in more time and effort. Their votes and how they position themselves on this is entirely relevant to how I plan to vote in the future. So you know, putting that vote on the ballot, I agree, we have to talk from a, from a legal standpoint, but putting those results is entirely relevant to how people may want to vote. I, I, I just think that to be the case. And you know, trying to hide that fact in any way, shape or form is, is a complete disservice to the, to the town of Hopkins Town. So I will mute myself now. Just a comment.
Well, I'll, I mean, I'll comment back. Only because I don't think anybody's suggesting hiding anything. I think there is a warrant that we warn people in which votes are recorded. And then there's a ballot in which we're asking people to vote. And the two aren't the same. And so I just, I think getting some legal guidance on how much, what is appropriate to put onto a ballot versus what is appropriate to put on a warrant is probably good guidance to have. And I don't think it's hiding anything. I think it's, it's, it's being clear and transparent to voters on, on the language that we're asking them to vote on. And I think we should get a legal opinion on that. And if we're going to include language other than what we're asking someone to vote on. Rob.
Thank you. James, just a couple of notes about the procedures themselves. And I'm assuming these would be shared with voters. First of all, thank you for doing this. It's, it is very well laid out. There's one in four, A, B, C, and then at the end, when you reference, will recess the meeting to a specific date in A? And then in recess the meeting to a specific date in B? And then the meeting will adjourn. One could maybe infer from that that the meeting is, it's, it's written as though the meeting is actually taking place. So I think that if I were going to edit that, I might want to italicize it in some way, just so the reader knows that this is meant to simulate that if we were all sitting in the gym. But we're not actually all sitting in the gym. And then on the very last part of four, where it says, please vote for each and every option in case that vote is considered and counted, I would put that in bold.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just so I, I think I know where this is in, but four, A, B, and C, I believe those references. Four, A is the contingent, is the result of what happens if the first question, do you approve these rules fails? That would be recessed. B would be if the rules pass, but the operating budget fails, we'd recess to a different date for the operating budget only. And C would be if the procedures and a budget pass, then everything gets counted and then the meeting is adjourned. So we are over at that point, instead of recessing to solve either everything in four A or just the operating budget in four B. So, yep, just wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page as to, as to where those recess adjournment discussion would be and what, sort of what those conditions are. Because I think I kind of skipped over that part. But that's.
I guess, I guess it sort of speaks back to last week when people were wondering, you know, am I, am I sitting in my car waiting to hear? And it just, it gets a little gray with that language. So, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Any other thoughts on the, I guess, on the rules, proposed rules or the ballot? Because they kind of go hand in hand. Andrea.
Yeah, I just had a, a question about where, so where are they going to download the ballot? Are they going on to the school district site? Are they going on to? Where, where are people going for this?
I would ask Steve, where are the best places for that would be? Because I think it would be easier, faster, safer for folks to print them off at home rather than relying on copies they receive at the meeting, at the voting. We will have them because not everyone will be able to print off at home. But for where to obtain that, obviously to be determined and should be included in these rules. But Steve, what would be the best site, do you think, for that?
Well, I think we can send it. We can.
Well, I think we can send it. We can, we can send it through all the town email list. But on the, you know, we put a front page on the website. This is the ballot with all the information. It would be a whole new page. You know, annual meeting plans, procedures and ballot in bold, it would be right there. Depending on the timing of the days, you know, whether or not you want to send a real ballot home, snail mail, obviously you couldn't do that if it's Friday, Saturday, but
Yeah, I don't think we'd have time.
But I think we can, we can get it out and have them available. But I think the front page of the school district website would be devoted to everything that you've talked about tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and I guess then just to follow up with that, if we're going to have it on, on the website in one specific spot, I would also ask then that we have the warrant, the actual warrant information there, kind of very obvious, readily available, just to kind of to Billy's point and to Norm's point of, so people can see the work that's gone into it, how this was voted on, the warrants as they stand. Yeah, and and I don't know, this is just something to think about. I don't know if that is also information that you want to have available to voters when they pull in.
Something to think about. Thanks.
Yeah, there must be annual, printed annual meeting books left somewhere. So those might be something we can pull together. Janet, I see your hand raised.
Okay, I don't know if I'm doing this right. I was pushing participant down the bottom, and I don't know if that was opening it up to you so that you knew I wanted to talk or if I needed to wave.
I saw you waving, and so that's what caught my attention. So you did, you did well.
Okay. What I wanted to ask, James, you talked about announcing this whole thing at some point. And where is that done? Is that done on Zoom? So everybody that has a computer has to sign into Zoom to listen to you? I don't know. I don't know how you're going to get the message out that we will be starting the voting and how it's going to work. Does that make sense?
So how are we going to communicate the steps, the three-step process from the beginning?
Yes, yes.
I would think similar to other town meeting notices where we put it out, I believe through email listserv, and Steve will correct me if I'm wrong, but email listservs. Certainly the Facebook page, I would ask Neil to help us out with the town sites. I would ask Susan Covert to help out in getting that out. But, and then we'd also, I think we envision having a mailing to explain the process as well, which would be in advance of that. That would need to be designed. If we keep it at the 16th, we would need to design that and get that out early next week. But that would be sort of where I envision the process going. But if you have other means, certainly let me know.
No, that, that's what I wasn't sure of, how we were going to get the word out. I mean, there'll be two times for them to to contact you about changes or whatever, and then what actually happened and so forth. And I just don't know how that information's going to get to people. That's what I'm concerned about. And the other thing is, I know when Bo did their voting, they had half the alphabet come in nine to 11, and then the other half from 11 to one. And that seemed to work terrific because they had close to 700 people vote. And they didn't talk about any kind of a tie-up and even Steve said when he got there, it was only a few cars there and so forth. So rather than the way we, you had originally talked about having some come in Kearsarge and some come in Park Avenue.
Yeah, I've amended that because since last week's meeting, I've learned that the entrance off of Kearsarge is closed.
Oh, that's right.
So we won't be able to use that at all. So to alleviate the mad rush, I would be recommending a split alphabet and requested voters come in the two-hour windows based off of last name. However, we would not turn anyone away if they come at the unpreferred time. That would just be a request for them to come in that way, so.
Yeah, I thought that went really smooth according to the paper and what I read the way they did it. Thank you.
Steve, to Janet's question, I'm just curious, what is the turnaround time to get whatever materials are going to go out? So, you know, printed, I guess, and then, and then mailed to registered voters?
Yeah, the turnaround time is that we print them in, and they will carry them out for every door delivery that day. So also, so I would say, you know, once they're designed, the next day, we bring them in and they carry them. So it's very quick. As soon as you hand them to the post office, they put them out that day. So it's a quick, I mean, it's, it's a very quick turnaround.
And so we, we, and I don't know this, actually, I don't know, James and I talked a little bit about this today, and it was, and I hadn't realized. So we have two distinct universes. We sort of have everybody, which is easy, that's everybody. And then we have registered voters, which is a subset of everybody. But in local elections, we, if you're not a registered voter, you can't vote because you can't do same-day registration. And so it's more of a question, if we, maybe if we mail to everybody, does that, maybe this is a Gene question, I'm sorry. If we, if we mail to every household, does that get us every registered voter in Hopkinton?
Probably, and then some, I would imagine.
Yeah, I would just say, and make sure you get the P O boxes because, excuse me, I have a P O box and I never got the census form, and I think it's because they send it to street addresses. So that would be my only suggestion. And you would get more than just registered voters, but I mean, it would be a lot more efficient, I think, like Steve suggested that, you know, to try to make a, we'd have to print out labels, we'd have to do everything for the, to get the registered voters, and you'd be talking at least a couple of days back.
And in the rules, we're, we're probably going to, again, to avoid confusion, just let people know that if they're not registered to vote, they, they can't register, so they can't vote.
Right. Yes, exactly. They cannot register at a meeting.
Okay. There are two hands up, but one of them disappeared. So Liz, your hand's up.
Yeah, I took my hand down.
Oh, okay, Gene.
Sorry, I just needed to unmute there. Thanks, Jim. Just circling back a little bit to dissemination of information, and I had spoken to James a little bit about this, and I guess one thought was to, you know, would be for James to do a few Facebook Lives in the next week or so, as soon as the, you know, as soon as sort of the the information has been agreed upon that could be done either from the school district website, Facebook page, or the town Facebook page. Because I just know right now Facebook Lives are getting a lot of engagement out there. And I think that there would be people who would jump on and you could even, you know, do it so that somebody is able to read the, you know, the comments on it. It's not a, you know, it is not an interactive format, but at least James could explain verbally, you know, what's going to take place. People can type in, you know, comments, questions right then and there, which can be gathered up. Again, it's just kind of a barometer on how many people might engage and see it. I, you know, again, it's just another way to potentially engage in some people that that might be able to do that electronically in addition to, you know, physical mailings and, and things like that, to be able to explain things. You know, some people are better audible learners, you know, than reading learners. I mean, so some people might do better listening to it being explained as opposed to reading about it. So again, just looking at different ways, you know, different ways we can approach it to be able to give everybody a chance to, to, to hear it several different ways, different types of formats as opposed to just written. Or as opposed to just, you know, given in a, in a text format.
Thanks, Liz. Any other, and so I guess we're on this sort of last bullet here around the process to communicate, and it sounds like we're, we're making good headway on this one. I don't know if there's any other thoughts on sort of the communication piece that we want, you know, James, at this, actually, I guess the communication piece is more on the school board side than it is on James's side. James will set the date, put the rules together, properly worn, and let everybody, you know, meet the statutory requirements that he's obligated to do. But the communication side is really on us as the board to do what we can. And if James wishes to participate, he laughs now, but he will.
Well, I think I better, if I, if I want these rules adopted, because the last thing I want to do is go through all this and not have them adopted. So if I want them adopted, I better get out there ahead of it, so.
Any other thoughts on, on sort of the communication piece? Norm.
So just to be clear, the school board would determine how to communicate to our, to the voters and to the community once James sets the date, correct?
Yeah, I think it would be our responsibility to have that, that piece, that that would be under our jurisdiction, and so we would.
So who would develop the way that we would be communicating? Communicate in that?
I think we would develop that. The board would, we would have to figure that piece out.
I mean, we got that proposal, you saw, that's something to think about and consider from Dulcey, I think was well received by quite a few people, which is a great way of communicating. Have you had a chance to review that at all, a little bit?
I haven't, and I think most people, I, I don't know who has or who hasn't seen it, and so at this point, it's, so, so people know, I think there's some community members who, who helped put together a communication plan. It was sent, I think, to some people, but I don't know how widely or who's seen it, so.
Because there's, there's a short, short window in order to execute it. You know, if we were having the meeting on the 16th, there is, you know, it's a very clear path of being able to communicate with all taxpayers within the community. You know, I think it's something that the board needs to consider sooner than later. Just, just my own personal preference, but I think the goal of the board is to be able to communicate with, with as many voters as possible. And we have a lot of brilliant people in Hopkinton to help us support all the angles within this community, our older generation, everyone. And it's something that this board needs to make sure that we can communicate to everybody and that we are clear on what they're voting, voting on. So when they get to the ballot, they understand exactly what they're voting on. And I think we have enough support in this town where we can do that.
Rob.
Yeah, just wanted to pop in. I did see the communication plan that Dulcey shared, and it is based on that two-week time period, and it seems pretty reasonable. So it would be a good template to work from. Because it's a leaping off place if that's what we choose to do.
Thanks, Rob. Anything else on the communications? And then I think we can, we can probably go back to a broader exchange and then ask James sort of what he's thinking. So anything else communication-wise? Any other last-minute thoughts, perspectives, comments, suggestions? Grips, non-grips, anything? James, what, what is your, I guess, what's your process, decision-making process here? That's probably a good stopping question.
Well, like I said earlier, I will be issuing a, or issuing a postponement away from the ninth that I am sure on. Till when is I am less sure on? And there's a couple of questions that were raised this evening that I'd like to check with counsel on. And I, if I could get those answers tomorrow, I could easily see announcing the postponement possibly tomorrow afternoon, but I don't want to promise that. But early next week to come up with a decision if that's, if that would still work with the timeframe for the board and sort of what's in the back of your head for, back of the envelope calculation for communication plans.
Yeah, so I think on that, we will respond to what, what you do. And so if you issue a new date, I think the board will just be attentive to that date and need to come together to figure out what a communication piece looks like and how we move forward. So it's, so I would just say whenever, because we don't know what you're going to decide or when. So I would just say whenever you, we should just stay coordinated so we can ensure that, you know, once we know the date, then the, then the board will have to come back together to figure out the next step. Any other, any other thoughts for James? I'm going to pull the agenda back up because I think this was, I think that may conclude, at least at this point, the annual meeting portion of our agenda. I don't want to promise that until I see what else. Where is the agenda? Anything else? I'm not seeing any hands. James, I want to thank you for, you don't want to see that. There we go. For all your work and for hanging out with us this long. Yeah, Steve's giving an applause. That's, it's a lot of work. So thank you so much for bearing with us. I would also, so we're going to move on here on our agenda. For those who are not current school board members or Steve Chamberlain or our two student represent, representatives, you're more than welcome to hang out and listen to the rest of our meeting and participate, but I am going to move you into the attendees portion and not as a participant. And so thank you all for taking the time, sharing your thoughts. Billy's excited. You can have dinner now. But thanks all for participating.
Jim, Jim, can I just have a quick question here?
Oh, man, no, no, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
Just, just so I can leave too, because I'd like to stick around for public comment on everything we just talked about. I don't know if it would be out of order to ask that we have a public comment period now, while all of these are fresh in people's minds before, and then I can leave at that point as well, instead of, and not hear the rest of the stuff. I don't know, what thoughts are, though?
Yeah, that'd be definitely out of order, James. Now, I'm just, no, no, I'm just kidding. So it's a really great suggestion. That's why you're a moderator. And so what I'll do, if, if everybody is okay with it, I didn't see any head shaking. So what I would do is just ask again, if you're on the line and you have something that you would like to say, and I would just ask if you have something relevant to the discussion that we just had on the annual meeting, both the date, the plan, or, or any thoughts or suggestions, you know, please limit yourself to the annual meeting rather than all the other comments. And then we'll have an additional public comment at the end of the meeting to capture other thoughts or suggestions on other topics. And so we have a number of hands that have gone up, and so I, I'll just take these in order as we go, as we have them. So the first up is going to be Mary, and so I'm going to allow you to talk, which I've just done, so you can unmute yourself and just state your name, where you live, and then provide your comment.
I just want to make sure my microphone's working.
We hear you.
Okay, all right. So this is Mary Kirstine. I live on seven, 757 Pennacook Road. And I want to start by saying that there's been a lot of talk about communication and how communication is key and is going to be key in this. And, you know, in the past, the school and the school board have really struggled with communication. And I have to say, I had absolutely no idea that there was even a tentative plan for the meeting to be moved to the, whatever it was this, to next Saturday. And I'm a pretty involved citizen, but also frankly, as an essential worker, my, my mind has been elsewhere. I've been preoccupied with important things. And so I'm really concerned that everything that we've talked about isn't, I mean, I'm really concerned about the communication part. I'll be perfectly honest. I think that people are going to slip through the cracks, people who are normally very involved citizens. Like I, I mean, you all know that I've been pretty involved. I had no idea that there was this tentative move to next week for the meeting date. And then also And then also, the multi-day process that was proposed by James, I find it to be overly burdensome to people who still are having to go out and work. Like I said, I'm an essential worker. I work in a school with kids with disabilities and I work on Friday nights. How is someone like me supposed to be able to participate in, even, even in the second session, for example, where you're supposed to learn about all the amendments, all the discussion, and then immediately the next day, go and vote on everything? You know, I get out of work at 10:00. How am I supposed to participate in this process? I can't. You know, at least it, with the annual meeting, at least it was just one day that I had to take off work. And this would be basically three days of work that I would have to change my schedule and take time off to be able to fully participate. So it's unnecessarily burdensome, I find. And everything was just confusing. I mean, I'm a pretty, pretty young person and I'm pretty up to date on technology. I was confused by the, by the explanation of the entire process. And so what you would be doing would be expecting people who don't use Zoom regularly, who may have never used this before, to understand how to either call in or use their computer to access it, understand the entire process as proposed by James, you know, within a short time period. I mean, you guys think about what your learning curve was when you first started having to do Zoom meetings and how, you know, there's always these technological problems to start with, and it's a learning curve. And so what you're doing is you're expecting people who have never used this platform before to learn how to use the platform and be able to use, use the entire new meeting format successfully within a very short amount of time. And that is completely unfair to a large portion of the town community. And I just, I, I have no faith in any part of what was proposed tonight, frankly, because if I find it confusing and I find that there was a lack of information communicated, I can only imagine what it's going to be like for a large portion of the, the rest of the town. So thank you very much.
I was muted. Thank you, Mary, I appreciate your comments. So next up is Candy. And Candy, you should be able to unmute yourself.
I'm unmuted.
You're unmuted, you made it.
Hooray. I think it was, of course, I participated in the first one last week. I, I think James Newsom did a great job. I think it's pretty self-explanatory in a lot of ways. I think the questions that we have due to the governor's stepping up to give more guidance has both been helpful and also has backed us into saying, well, we thought we knew what we were going to do. Now we have another chance to postpone, all that. Dulce has a great idea how to communicate and will get people to be able to volunteer. I think that's great to have people to participate. As far as Bo, I, I don't think it's apples and oranges. I think it's Galas and Fugees. We're both apples. I think a lot of our similarities are, well, we're similar. I think they're, they also support their schools very well, and that's great. I do have a bit of a concern about people printing their own ballot, but not enough to raise a, a big red flag. We will be able to check them in as registered voters. People will be able to vote, they're just going to have to download some of the information as soon as it's available. And my suggestion would be either to wait until the 15th or I think the 22nd. The 22nd might even be better to cover the communication for the people of this town. And, and there I am. I have another thing. Are we going to vote on Jim O'Brien's mustache and beard?
That wasn't, that wasn't really up for a vote tonight, but you know.
I know, I just asked a question. Somebody can move it. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Candy.
Those comments in Article 12. Any other business legally before the meeting?
Oh, right. Oh, there was another thing. If there are monies coming back to the town from the school, I, maybe sometimes there is, and there's usually a, will you accept this to go back into the school? Maybe it would be after you figure out what that's going to be, maybe put that towards funding some of the things that are questionable. Just an idea.
Great, thank you, Candy.
Thank you, dear. Bye.
Bye-bye. So next up is David. Give me one second, and you should be able to unmute yourself.
You guys hear me okay?
Sure can.
Awesome. Just wanted to first off thanking, I mean, obviously, people have put some time and effort into thinking about how this, this meeting would go about. But that's not why I'm, I'm here. I'm here to talk a little bit about my concerns over having a meeting. But first, I just wanted to say, as I think about what we're talking about here, there's really two different challenges we're trying to solve, right? The first is how do we have a safe and effective meeting that gets the accurate vote of all of our citizens? That's, that's problem one. Problem two is how do we get a school budget passed? And in particular, how do we get a reasonable budget in this economy? And I think while the two, you know, are the outcomes of the one meeting, I think we need to separate them. If we think about the meeting itself, you know, we've heard a little bit about how we might have to rely on technology. And I do share some of those concerns that we're going to ask some of our lower-income folks, some of the elderly or those who just aren't good with technology, to have to use these tools to cast their ballots or, you know, prepare for casting their ballots. I'm not sure that's a reasonable approach. I also have some concerns about ballot security. So we're talking about printing ballots at home, and then how are those, those ballots going to be counted? How do we know that all of them are going to be counted? I would hope that you guys have procedures, you know, the integrity of the ballot count. You know, we're sitting here too, we're staring in the face of the governor's order saying, everybody, please stay at home, it's for your own safety. Don't gather, you know, these, these are mass gatherings over 10 people for sure. And we're asking people to essentially go against those orders to cast a ballot for a budget, maybe not have the full public comment that we're normally used to, having some people, you know, go up and tell their personal stories of how budget increases and tax increases can affect them in bad ways. And I really think that we need to be thinking about, you know, perhaps keeping budgets flat until we can have a, a, a meeting that we typically have. That's sort of what I wanted to talk about, and I urge the board and those involved to consider the safety and making sure that the entire town is heard in the way that they need to be heard.
Great, thank you, David. Appreciate the comments. Dennis Goddard is up next. Just give me one second, Dennis, and I will give you the ability to comment. All right, Dennis, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
So I just wanted to echo and, you know, agree and agree with the sentiment that I heard about not wanting to have confusion about wanting to have some, you know, that it sort of erodes confidence unless we have some kind of a date certain. In that capacity, you know, when we're managing change, it's very important to try to, if we know that we're going to have to have a big change, we try to do so once rather than being continuously in a position of having to explain what the most recent change is, which erodes confidence even more. So I would strongly recommend to the group that if we're going to defer, let's defer once to a significantly far ahead date where we can plan properly, whatever, wherever the dust falls. And I think there's a little bit of maybe historical wisdom from our beloved New Hampshire Constitution, which let me just share briefly. You know, it was the nation's both first and last constitution. It was very, very well appreciated at the time that they did not want to draft their fundamental governing document in the middle of a war. So they did an intentionally temporary one, and then after the war was done, they had another constitutional convention to write the one that we now reference. So I think there's some analogy there that we might want to draw here. Let's put a couple Band-Aids on what we have to, but we're in the middle of an emergency, not the right time to have really big questions about the future of town and where we're going. This is not the time for those questions. Differ those for right now. So that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate it. And next up, as I get my, clicking all my buttons here, there's going to be Peg. So Peg, I'll have you all set in one second. So Peg, you should be able to unmute yourself and, and give a comment. Thank you.
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Excellent. I'm Peg DePastina, and I'm at 650 Pennacook Road. I just, I really kind of agree with the last gentleman. That was, that was really good thought. But I was thinking more about getting information out to people. I know that I used to volunteer at the library, and we did a lot of information sessions there, you know, cookies with Cass, things like that. That might be a fun Zoom to do if, if the library could get those people to get together and make that happen. I know Steve has been out there with, tweets with Steve, I believe we call it, and that was a great way to get the school board information out there. The other thing is, I was thinking about the, the seconding. If you have multiple people that are asking for an amendment, you could ask them, when they write in their amendment, would they be willing to be a second if someone else gets there first? That might help out with that. But I'm really glad you guys have this, and I'm glad I'm hearing more about paper documents coming out. We usually get a lot of information that you can either pick up at the library or at the post office, but those places are kind of packed right now with packing tape. So if there was a way to get that out sooner than later, that would be great because that's a lot of information to read through. And heaven knows we have time to be reading it now, a lot of us, but we don't have the information available. So that would be great. And that's all I wanted to say. And I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Peg. Appreciate it. So next up is going to be Diane. And just give me one second, Diane, for me to put you on. So Diane, you should be all set to unmute yourself, and we should be able to hear you. Diane, are you there? I'm going to try to unmute you. Diane?
Okay, how's that?
Oh, there you go, we can hear you now.
Okay. This is Diane LaChance at 264 Amesbury Road. And I had a couple comments. I, I like Jim O'Brien's reasoning about what these emergency order is offering us. And I would like to, maybe James could check on this, but in thinking about the state of emergency and how long it will last, I'm thinking that we will be in a state of emergency until we can gather in any sizable crowd, any size crowd, and that that could be as long as it takes to get a vaccine and know that it's effective, or sooner if there's a treatment. So I think we're pretty safe that we're going to be in a state of emergency for a while. But again, maybe that could be checked so that we wouldn't have to maybe quickly act on an annual meeting or a budget. And I also wanted to say that, I guess I would echo what the other person said, is that getting the information out, the library and the senior center might be good resources. I don't know what they can do remotely. I think the idea that getting information out on the computers is going to be a big challenge for the seniors. And, but they may have ideas on how to get that done if we decide to go forward with the, the meeting. And the only other comment was, I know you've said, James said that there would be time for comments between the two meetings, but how about getting questions answered? Are you thinking those are one in the same comments or, and are questions?
Yes, that, yeah, so the questions would be submitted, and then at the second virtual meeting is when those would be able to be posed and the select board could answer at that point. So yeah, I do envision questions as well, yeah.
Okay, those are all my comments. I appreciate all the hard work everybody's doing. I know it's a lot of work. And I, again, I'll just say, I agree with Jim O'Brien, and I'm a little nervous whether or not this will pass muster, but we'll just keep talking. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Appreciate it. And then the only other hand I have up right now, well, I got two more. And so I'm going to actually, I'm going to actually call Scott Zipke next. And then David, your hand is raised, and I don't know if you have a second comment or if I just failed to, to unraise your hand your first time. So there's a button that says lower your hand. If, if you have another comment, that's great. But if, if it's my mistake, if you, if you just want to lower that hand, that'd be also wonderful, I'll call on you. And so Scott, I'm going to allow you to speak. And Scott, you should be able to unmute yourself and, and make your comment.
Yep. So I just wanted to comment here that we already have non-tenured teachers that are, now that they've heard this plan and are already starting to survey what jobs are out there and potentially apply for them, that that's the urgency in this, in this meeting, is that we're going to start at some point to bleed teachers, whether the budget changes or not. And in my mind, this emergency order doesn't really change much about the date of hire. That's the letters, that was, May 15th was the date that letters of non-renewal had to go out. And probably, that's normally the date that contracts go out at the same time, obviously, one or the other to teachers. But I can't imagine that the district is going to issue zero contracts. So those teachers who don't get those contracts are by default getting notices and non-renewal. I think that's when we really start to bleed teachers. So the more we push this meeting back, the more those teachers, those non-tenured teachers that aren't offered contracts are going to start to look elsewhere. And they're going to start to, you know, apply for jobs in other districts. And I don't know who already has applied for jobs in other districts, but I certainly know that those non-tenured teachers are starting to survey what's out there. So I think that's the urgency in having this meeting as soon as we can. Even if this executive emergency order allows us to push it back, it doesn't necessarily mean that that's the best thing to do. And then my only other comment was, and I think the previous woman had alluded to this, that I don't know when the state of emergency expires, but if this state of emergency expires and we haven't had this meeting, then it would be my thought that the district is in statutory liability that, and are required to hire everyone back at that point. At that point, they haven't, they haven't met the date required by law. So I don't, I think there's a couple reasons to really push for getting this meeting done. And although pushing it back a week obviously makes sense, I, the more we push it back, the more danger we are that, that good teachers in the district are going to start to look for jobs elsewhere and apply for jobs elsewhere. And that would be my concern about just not seriously considering the need to have this meeting, let alone what we actually can do now because of this emergency order. All right, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
And then I, David, and I'm going to, I'm going to bring you on over and allow you to talk. And I, again, I don't know if you didn't want to raise your hand again, but if you have something else to say, you can unmute yourself now?
Yeah, I did have one more thing to add.
Oh, great. Thanks, David.
So I'm hearing the comments of Mr. Zipke, and I can certainly appreciate that. You know, certainly if I was an employee, I'd want to know, you know, do I have a job to come back to? But I think we also need to consider, you know, the district isn't going to shut down, right? We're going to still have school. We know the teachers are going to still need to come back. I think the question is, how many? How many come back with contracts? How many new do we hire? How much supporting staff do we hire? What do our expenses look like? And that's the, the basis for my second comment is, we don't know. We've been shut down for, you know, essentially a third of the school year. You know, we're You know, we're entering a state of likely recession. We have 30 million Americans who are on unemployment. And I think the public really needs to, or wants to understand, what does the budget look like from carryover from last year? They're going to want to know what preparations, you know, may we need to make for next year? And frankly, we, we don't know how long the state of emergency is going to continue. We're all under the assumption that the kids are going to return to school normal time on the normal academic calendar next year, but we don't know that. And I, I suggest that, you know, perhaps that is also a basis for waiting a little longer to see what's happening as it does in fact affect the budget.
Thank you, David. Appreciate your comments. At this point, are there any other, I don't have any other hands raised that I can see? And so just wondering if there's anybody else who wishes to provide public comments specifically on, on the annual meeting preparations, timing and plan that has been put forward today? All right. So seeing none. Billy, I see your hand is up. And if you have something that you want to say?
Yeah, just, I really want to thank all the attendees and the panelists here. I'm hard pressed to think of a school board meeting and I don't think we had a lot of outreach for this particular meeting as we have, but I'm counting, if I count this right, we almost have 60 people here. That's pretty impressive. And, and I completely appreciate all the opinions. And I think we, you know, might want to try to give technology a chance here. This has been very open, a lot of participation and quite frankly, a lot, a lot more attendees than I, than I would have thought. So I just wanted to bring that point up to the people that are here. And thank you. And thank, thank you, Jim as chair and thank you, James, and everybody else who's trying to find a fair and reasonable way that we can get the proper temperature of this town to vote for a potential budget. So thank you.
Thank you, Billy. All right. So I think now whoever is not on the board can probably leave and go have dinner or, or continue to listen to the, I think someone called this entertainment last meeting. And so you can, you can continue to be entertained by us, but I am probably going to remove you from a panelist and so the board can sort of be going. So good night, James. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to give a quick thanks to everybody participating, listening and giving advice and information and comments. It's all been very helpful as I navigate these waters going forward. I very much appreciate it. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks.
Good night, all members.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. So for those of us who are still here, let's move on in our agenda. So we'll, we're under, so we can, so we can reorient ourselves. We are under items for board discussion and the next item is facility project update. And so I am going to turn it over to Norm, who's chair of the building committee to provide us with an update.
Yes, and I'll be quick. I want to thank the Hopkinton Water Precinct for allowing us to use their engineer in regards to fire suppression. Unfortunately, we cannot use the water precincts for the fire suppression. We're going to have to use a system in order for, for that. A couple more updates is we had a few more redesigns of the bathroom that looked great. Steve made a good couple of points in there, which looked really great. We are just about to go out for bid. So that's some really great news. So about next week, am I correct, Michelle? Is Michelle here?
No, she's not on.
Okay. So next, next week, we're about to go up for bid for everything. So I'm excited to see that. And we have our next meeting next week on Tuesday at 4:30. And she said, yes, that is correct. Next week we go out for bid. And that is the update.
Thanks, Norm. Just any questions for Norm on the facility project and where we currently are at? All right. Seeing none. Let's move on to the next item, which is the last day of school, end of school year. Counting hours. I love how that's set up. And so I think at our last meeting, I think Norm had brought up what, where we were. Other districts have been changing their end of school day based upon hours rather than days in classroom. And so Steve, you are going to look into that and provide us a little bit of analysis.
Yes. And so tonight is just for information. There's not an action item connected to this. We do have another meeting next week, which is of no surprise because we meet often. So the, this, so the Hopkins New School District actually does go by hours because we have 178 student days, which the requirement is 180. But years ago, we switched from having four early release. And we said, you know, early release wasn't a great model for us. And so we went to 178 full days. So by regulation, we are a district that goes by counting hours. So the 990 hours is required for secondary, 945 is required for elementary. And we only had two snow days. So if we look at 176 days of instruction, how many hours we have and then we subtract out. So the long, the short, the short crit item is if the, we could meet the 990 hours if the board moved back the end of school six days. So there are, we would be six days over the required number of hours. Anything beyond that, if you, if the board wanted to say, oh, Steve, I'm so tired of this. I want to go 10 days early. That would require commissioner approval as a waiver of the 990. But no requirement from this, no support from the state is required to move six days. That gets us to the 990 hours of instruction secondary, 945 elementary. Was that clear?
Yeah, it was. And so six days, just dates on a calendar. That would bring us, if we use, if we were to go this route and use six days, that would put us like the very end of May. Is that?
Yeah, I'm pretty, so right now we're eight, nine. And so if we back it up, I think we could get to the May 29th. I think that's it or something like that. I just, a couple of other things to think about as you're walking around and getting ready for a decision on this next week. How we work with the, with the teachers. So the teachers go by days. So how, what we would do with the last student days, we would still have some teacher days. We've talked as a leadership team, we've talked about having some real tight debriefing days so we can take notes. Some real curriculum decision days, where, where people are in the insured learning of the curriculum because it's been such a funky year. So we think we can work with the association and have good use of this time. We're not sure if we could move some days from here to the beginning of next, if we needed that. There's some accounting issues there, prepaid expenses that could have some impact. But there's also one other approach that we talked about and had some traction is a staggered end of the year. So if you've done all your work and you've met all your competencies and you're all caught up, you end here, but allow some more days for extension of time, a staggered end academic support. We're obviously very concerned about all students, but seniors, if there's a couple of extra days to support seniors to make sure they can get, you know, they can get what they need. There's, some districts are looking at a stagger to really provide support for seniors who may have had different engagement during this process. So those are just some options.
That's great. Norm?
So Steve, you're going to come back to the board next week with a recommendation or is it going to be a discussion from us? How does it work?
I would be pleased to bring a recommendation forward, but the, my job, I think, was to give you all the information that you needed to, to reflect and ponder as an action item next week. Because I do think the community would like, and the teachers would like to know, you know, May 7th, if, you know, we're talking about three to, three to four weeks really at that point at the end of the year. But yeah, I'd be, I'd be pleased to make a recommendation, what we believe is what's best for kids.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Andrea?
I just wanted to sort of echo that. I know that we're, tomorrow's May 1st. If we're looking at shortening this up, there's a, there's a difference, I think, for teachers planning six more weeks versus five or four more weeks. So I, I mean, I, just to put my piece out there, and I know that we're not, this is not an action item tonight, but I would certainly support, you know, backing it up a bit. And I do like the kind of the staggered ending. So if you're done, you're done. If you need a couple more days, you're good. Just to, I know, again, we're not voting on it, but just to kind of give teachers a little bit of an idea. And I hope they understand that we're really thinking about this.
I would like though to have a recommendation from Steve. I mean, he's much closer to the teachers than I am. And it really is, do they want more time? Do they want less time? And I would want to know that before I voted on this.
Thank you. Happy to do that. Pleased to do that.
Any other thoughts from anybody? Ella, Charlie? This impacts you. All smiles. That's good. All right. So we can all dwell on it. I think we could also, oh, Norm, did you want to say something? Sorry.
I guess my only, my only, my only question, Steve, is how are parents, how are they, have you heard any feedback from parents that are asking you to make this shorter? You know, because a lot of people are, a lot of people are struggling to teach their kids in this window and work. And I think, you know, for me, that's really important to kind of know. I respect and support our teachers, but I also am looking at the other equation of parents. You know, I'm, I'm in that boat and just curious for your thoughts.
Yes. And if you get a chance to see the correspondence, that is a sample of, we absolutely understand that this is a challenge and a lot of stress. So yes, I don't think I've gotten any emails saying this is a breeze. Don't worry, you know, let's just keep going. So it is a challenge. There's a lot of complexities and, you know, some depending on where you are with littles versus mediums versus, you know, a little more independent kids. And we have reached out and we have some data and we are connecting with teachers. So I think we can, this is something that is very reticent. And we had two discussions as leadership team, but we'll bring forward a recommendation that takes that into account next week.
Just a, just a thought on, on that. If, and if there is a way that you could put, we can, you could put the recommendation sort of in the public notice, at least what you're thinking of putting forward. I only say that because I do think the, some members of the public may have comments based upon the recommendation and thinking that ahead of time, they may, it may help them come forward and share those comments. And so if, if possible, it would be great as, as you do the public notice for the meeting to, you know, include what the recommendation is in case people do want to comment during that first public comment period or even the last one on that recommendation, that might, that might be helpful.
Happy to do it.
Any other thoughts before we move on to the next item? I guess one just came to mind, and this is based upon, I think, public comment that we heard at the beginning of the meeting just around grading. And, and I don't know, I mean, that, that is surely a recommendation from you. And I, and I think you're going to bring something forward next meeting as well. And again, if that could be put forward in the same sort of way, just so people know as they look at our agenda, what that might look like and so they can be prepared for comments, that again would be helpful.
Sure.
Isn't that tricky, Steve, because it's going to be a recommendation from Chris?
Yeah, but Chris and I talk pretty well, pretty often.
Okay. So it'd be, you guys would come up with a mutual decision and set forth in the, okay. All right. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
All right. Next up is personnel. And so I think as we, Steve, you started off on the additions or deletions. You talked a little bit about whether or not we need to do the nomination slate at this point. And it sounds like we don't, but I don't want to put words in your mouth. And so is that something you still think we can table or what's the best move?
Yeah, I, I just think I would like the community to know in that we are putting together contingency plans for either a budget that is reduced or if the meeting gets postponed, what the reasonable amount of expenses are there. And I think we can talk in non-public specifically, but we are putting different scenarios together for the board to know and about how we are addressing the not, you know, the unknown regarding, you know, what Scott Zipke alluded to with, with the lack of contracts and things. So the leadership team has spent a lot of time trying to take a look at what different scenarios would look like. And so we are giving that attention.
Perfect. And so for the board members here, we do have on the agenda, non-public session. And so this would be part of that non-public discussion. And then Steve, enrollment update. I know you're watching kindergarten like a hawk.
I am. I've been doing that for a few years, it seems like. So, and this impacts staffing. But we had, Jim and Andrea, we had a meeting this week. So we had the largest one-week enrollment in kindergarten in my time as superintendent. So we had, last week, we had 10 students register in one five-day period. And we had one today. So we are now up to 57 kindergarten students, which, and I think I put it in board notes, 57 would be a four-class configuration of 14, 14, 14, 15, as opposed to a three, which is an 18, 19, 19. And we were in the 40s. We were at 46 for a long time. And we were projecting so, in Mr. Carosa, in my world, the, the line of, the cut line has been 53. You know, 53 is in that gray. We're, it's not May 1st yet. That's tomorrow and we're already at 57. So we're very comfortable looking at this as a four-section kindergarten. We're not at the five. If you remember, NASDAQ had this 66 to 85 range in their updated piece. But this is where Mr. Carosa and I start a pool and he's predicting 67 and he's winning all those lately. So I've kind of sheepishly not challenged him on it, but we are at four. Third grade is holding at 67, which in the budget is a 22, 22, 23. And sixth grade is holding at a 65, which in the budget is a 22, 22, 21. Those are still at threes, but kindergarten slid since the last time I gave you this update from a three to a four. And that makes sense. I think that makes sense.
Any, any questions? Any questions for Steve on enrollment or where we're at? All right. Thanks, Steve. So we've reached our third public comment for tonight. And so I'm going to turn it again to, to the attendee pane. And again, I think if people wish to provide public comment, just raise your hand and I'll move you over. And so you can listen, so you can provide comment. And so we're going to start with Mary. So Mary, give me one second. And Mary, you should be able to unmute yourself and provide your comment.
Yep. Hi again. It's Mary Kirstine. I just wanted to take a moment to say how great the online learning has been for, for our son, that he has really been enjoying it. He has really, he, he thinks it's, it's really great. He's been telling me about what some of his classmates think of it. And it seems to be really working for some people. And so particularly since Steve mentioned that he was going to be talking with teachers about what things could look like going forward. I, I would really like to, in the future, see a lot more discussion and a lot more emphasis given to remote learning by Hopkinton. Because like I've said, it's, it's worked really well for, for a lot of, particularly the high schoolers is, is my understanding. It's worked really, really well for us. Our son is a lot more motivated now that he knows that he has to arrange his own schedule and he, it's his responsibility to make sure that he's showing up to class. You know, he's really taken ownership of this and we've seen an increase in his sense of responsibility. And so going forward, I would really like the school district to think about continuing and expanding remote learning even if and when the stay-at-home order ceases and regular schooling can recommence. Thank you.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I was muted the whole time. Thanks, David.
David DiPiano. So I wanted to just chat a little bit about, I know there's, there's no formal proposal yet, but just to kind of give my thoughts on the remote learning and the potential ability to get out of school a little earlier. I think the technology is, is pretty good. I would disagree though, that every student is learning.
I would disagree, though, that every student is learning at the same rate that they would in the classroom. So, you know, when I think of, you know, we're, we are already giving up April break to get out a little earlier. If we're talking about getting out even earlier than that, I think the board should consider that summer camps, virtually all summer camps, at least for us, have been canceled. So that's putting students at home. That adds burden to parents. So, you know, when I think of online learning and the burden that we place on parents by getting kids out even earlier, I'd like the board to consider perhaps using up to the date that we already had scheduled for our last day and use that time to identify any gaps that some students have, have between what they should have learned and maybe online learning wasn't as effective as in-class instruction and form a guide or a map for those deficiencies that the students need to overcome when they do go back to school in the fall, if they go back to school in the fall, which we all hope.
I was trying to talk and I was talking to myself. Thank you for those comments. It's much appreciated. So next up, let's see, is Chlamir. And so I'm going to bring you over. There we go. And you should be able to unmute yourself.
There you go. Hi, I'm, my name's Carly Lamire. I'm an hourly employee of the Hopkins New School District. And when we're talking about lowering the hours of school, my question would just be that my contract is a certain amount of hours. So I'm to be working 1,262 hours a year. So I would just be concerned about the people that are in my same agreement and contract, just making sure that everyone is still getting the amount of hours that we sign to get in our contract.
Thank you. That's a really good point. And I think we would have to consider that to make sure. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to provide comments? I see no other hands up. And so I'm bank, I'm guessing not. So with that, is there any additional? We don't have a catch-all other category. Is there anything else that any board member would like to bring up for the go-to-the-order at this point? Seeing none. So we have our next meeting a week from today, unless we need to meet earlier. And I would just say if, if the moderator comes back with a date certain for meeting, it may, I'll probably have a conversation with Steve and Andrea, but it may, may mean that we want to move that, that Thursday meeting a little earlier to buy us some more time to talk about a communications plan and kind of get that ball rolling. And so just, I just ask for your flexibility, if you can. And we'll do our best to be, to be in touch with you to make sure that it all works. But that's the one thing I, I'm thinking if we do find a date that we might want to get ourselves together quicker rather than wait till next Thursday to start developing that plan. With that, we do have on the agenda a need for a non-public session, which would be under A for Personnel. And so what I would ask for someone to do is to make a motion to go into non-public session under RSA 91A32A for Personnel.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so the motion's been made and seconded. So this is a roll call vote, and it's a roll call vote anyway. So we'll start with Seth. You're on mute, Seth.
Seth, A-frame, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
So Jim O'Brien is a yes. So we'll go into non-public. For, for those on the board, when we disconnect this meeting, expect an email from me that will have a link to go into non-public. I will get that to you hopefully in two or three minutes. And my suggestion is that we convene a non-public session at 8:15. And that gives us a few minutes for a bio break and to grab any snacks that we wish to grab before we engage in yet another conversation. So with that, I would, we don't need a motion to adjourn. And so I would, we're going to go into non-public session. So we're going to leave this meeting. So I just want to-